That was Sam. Were you up? Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025. It's now 10:01 a.m. We're here for the regular session of the Hunt County Commissioners' Court. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order and please stand as we have prayer and pledge of allegiance. Our gracious heavenly Father, thank you for all the many blessings you bestow on us. And Lord, we just ask you blessings on our county and our state and our nation as we struggle with some difficulties throughout the country. And Lord, we just ask you to give all of us wisdom and strength to make the decisions we need to make today. Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, everyone. We have Commissioner Hutchins, Monroe, Smith, and Harrison present. I'm Judge Stovall presiding over the meeting today. Commissioners, you got the minutes from August 26th, 2025, regular session. Entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Commissioners, you got the minutes from September 4th, 2025, special session. Entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We got the minutes from September 9th, 2025, regular session?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we'll have public testimony. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. The Commissioners' Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff. They may be placed on a future agenda or addressed by some other course of response. Has anybody wished to speak today? Anybody online? Not? We'll close the public testimony. Commissioners, under old business, we have none. Under new business, a consent calendar, we need to... I guess, Daniel, we need to strike or pull or can't postpone it because Dr. Rushings?
You need to pull that off that agenda item and then postpone.
Okay. So we're going to pull action number four on the consent. Entertain a motion for approval of consent calendars one, one, two, three, and five.
Judge, on agenda item number three, are there any items on the consent agenda related to agenda item number three?
No, not that I know of.
All right, just, just...
You want to pull it?
No, sir, I just want to make sure I was understanding that correctly. I'm good now.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Action item four, under the consent calendar. We've been informed Gina Rushing has sold her business and won't be in practice...
She called, she wants to do it.
Oh, she did? So she's staying here then? Okay.
She stalled her practice, but she's still at position.
Okay, well, good.
She's still wanting to do it.
Solved that problem. I didn't know that. All right. Commissioners, entertain a motion to approve number four, consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Under B, action items, approval of accounts payable?
Make a motion to approve payables?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of line item transfers?
Make a motion to approve line item transfers? Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of budget amendments?
Make a motion to approve budget amendments? Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of payroll and personnel?
Motion to approve payroll and personnel? Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number one, quarterly report from the Wolf City Public Library. I think it's... Oh, we got to get it there. Did not see you there, I'm sorry.
First, I want to thank you very much for allowing the Wolf City Library to come and be before you. We appreciate it so much. The library is small, so all funds are greatly appreciated. Does anybody on the Commissioners' Court have any questions about the library that we could answer?
Commissioners? Keep up the good work.
All righty. Thank you.
Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number two, I'm going to pull from the agenda. Postpone it till the next meeting. Everybody okay with that?
Sure.
That's okay.
Well, we can't... I'm not prepared to sign it with some of the language that's in it I hadn't seen before. I know, but I saw some language I haven't noticed in the past. So I want to work with it. If we have to do it by the end of the year or end of the fiscal year, we could still have a special session next week if we had to come back and do it. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, you can have one next Tuesday if you post the meeting by tomorrow.
Yep.
Unless the 29th is a holiday. If you post by tomorrow, at any time in the day tomorrow, you can have a meeting at any time Tuesday.
Okay. Well, I think we can get the other answered pretty quick. I just need to get the question to ask. Everybody all right with that? Okay. Action item number three. So I guess we need to say we're tabling two?
Yes, you can postpone it to the next meeting.
Okay. We'll postpone to the next meeting. Action item three. RFB number 263-25 cancellation, consider an approval to reject all bids of RFB number 263-25 road rock and authorized resolicitation of new bids. On September 10th, 2025, the county opened bids for RFB number 263-25 road rock. Following a review of the procurement process, it was discovered that an administrative error occurred during the solicitation phase, resulting in a qualified potential bidder being inadvertently amended from the bidder's list. Under local government code 262.027F, the Commissioners' Court may reject any and all bids before an award proceeding without including all qualified vendors would compromise the fairness of the process. Action requested reject all bids received for RFB number 263-25 road rock and authorize county purchasing agents to resolicet bids, ensuring all eligible vendors are included. Commissioners, got any questions?
Tammy's not with us. Does everybody... This won't be a lapse in pricing if there's a delay here. We'll still have pricing in effect, correct?
My understanding is yes. Until we get the new bids in and accept it.
So the pricing we have extends?
Extend until, yes.
Okay.
That was my question as well. Just to clarify, we'll still have, we'll still have rock that we can purchase?
Yeah, that's the way I understand it from Tammy.
All right.
Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number four, an application for structural repairs for Site 62 Pilot Grove Creek watershed. Sam, you want to speak or you mean to?
Go ahead, or I will if you need me to.
Okay. Commissioners, you got aware of Site 62 is the one in Mark's precinct that was sloughing, and we had to shut down some roads during the year last year, and it's continuing to get worse. The Upper Sabine Southwest CD District is... We're applying for a grant from the feds. Yeah. Okay, tell us about it, Sam. I can't remember all the things you told me.
Thank you.
You overload my mind sometimes, Sam.
Well, I hope I don't overload anybody. Okay, thank you. I'm Sam Stewart. I'm the district technician with the Upper Sabine Soil and Water Conservation District and formerly district conservationist with USDA and RCS. As you may know, we... The soil conservation and the Commissioners' Court are sponsors on several floodwater retarding structures in Hunt County. And these dams are... Some of them are 50 or 60 years old, and they're in need of repair. And we have an opportunity now to make application to get one of them repaired. This is Site 59 has had a major slide on it. It has some other things that are wrong with it, a lot of beaver undermining and things like that. So the state legislature has appropriated funds to soil and water conservation districts and sponsors like the court to, and we have to, get them repaired. They tell me that the repair cost will be 100%. Now, I've been doing this a long time, and you know, it's usually never 100%, but there's always some cost. This dam, as I said, has slid. We've repaired it a time or two, but in 2024, we had a major slide that this is a high hazard dam that if not repaired could cause, you know, somebody could lose their life if it breaks. So we want to take advantage of this opportunity. If you all so agree, our Soil Conservation District has agreed to make an application, and that's all we're doing right now is making an application. The estimated cost of this repair is $1,900,000 to fix.
Wow.
That's based on things that we know that are wrong with it and based somewhat on a dam that we repaired under this same structural repair program several years ago. And so that's what we're asking for you all's approval. I don't know if you all got a copy of the actual, if it's in your notes or not. So we have to have it in by September 30th. I've talked to the state office people and gotten the best information I can get. And so if you have any other questions, I'll try to answer them.
Is it Site 59 or 60?
It is Site 62.
Two, okay.
Pilot Grove Creek watershed.
All right. And Sam, what makes it a high hazard isn't that it's sloughing or there's a problem with the dam. It's just if the dam fails, it can cause damage or death downstream is what a high hazard is defined.
Yes, that's the definition. It's, is it can cause significant damage and loss of life. There are people downstream who have built in the floodplain. I only know of one house in Hunt County that is actually within the breach area, but there are several in Collin County, and you never know when one's going to pop up.
Yeah, but they can even take out a roads and different thing. I know there was one in east part of the county that if it breaks, it'll knock out one of the foreign market roads potentially.
Yes, that's true. And this would, this one would go out. It would wind up underneath 1567, I believe, the road that goes to Blue Ridge West out of Celeste.
Right.
So this is the only opportunity that, or is, as an opportunity, we've been working on it for two years trying to get something done. We currently, we have the TCEQ reports. We have dam safety engineer reports that recommend that we try to get it repaired. And there are any other programs, federal programs are, they take a long time, and they also, they only pay 65% federal and 35% local. This state program is 100%.
So for the public to understand, it is now at a much slower level than its full capacity.
It is.
Stay there, but it could fill up in a heavy rain.
It will fill up.
It will fill up.
Because the pipe, you know, they're designed to hold back floodwater. And so it is, it is, it's practically dry right now. But these slides, there's one on either side. There's one on the downstream side, one on the other side in TCEQ. We've always had trouble with beavers up there, and they drill into the dam, and then their tunnels collapse and, you know, it could, it's going to take a lot of work to fix it.
Thanks, Sam. Anybody else have questions?
Just one. So you said that your experience, you haven't seen a lot of 100% coverage. So as you go forward of this, if you, if you reach a point and 100% is not covered, what's the process then? Is that, is that Sabine River Authority thing? Does it come back with county? What happens? We, well, we have a, we have an agreement, a Hunt County Watershed Maintenance O&M or Operation and Maintenance Agreement, and we have funds in that. And also, you all provide funds to us for operation and maintenance of some of the things. So we have locally, there is some money already. And of course, before, if we happen to get, you know, if we get picked, then there will, there will be, we'll have to sign agreements of exactly what it is. But I've talked to the state engineer with, with State Soil and Water Conservation Board last Friday, and he told me 100%. But you know, you, sometimes you, somebody runs through somebody's fence or a water line gets broken or things that you wind up getting in a dispute about. But the, but the existing O&M account is where any overages would come from? Yes, sir.
Well, Sam, we sure appreciate your diligence monitoring this and other situations. It's keeping a lot of people safe.
We thank you all.
Thank you, Sam. Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? Motion carries. Action number five, a renewal and extension agreement for professional services between Justice Benefits Incorporated, Hunt County for two years. Scott, is he here? Okay, Aubrey.
Aubrey from the Auditor's Office. This is agreement with the company that the county attorney has a title for illegal grant, and this company does billing on behalf of them. They, it's for a portion of CPS cases or attorneys that work on CPS cases and some operating. It's based off of population percent, and the people will bill for us on our behalf, and they bill us, and they do not get paid unless we get money.
Okay.
And it's an existing contract? This is just the extension of the identical contract, if I understood the documentation?
Yes, we've had them for two years previous, and this is renewing for another two.
Just to point at protocol, I was looking at the agreement. Who has the authority to sign that? Is that through purchasing or is it the department heads?
It's usually me.
Is it you? Okay. It didn't delineate. I was just curious. All right.
Most things that approve through the court I sign. Thank you. Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Discuss and possibly take action on Hunt County to enter into a tax abatement agreement with Royal Oaks Enterprises LLC, Royal Oak Property located at 6202 Industrial Boulevard, Greenville, Texas, in the City of Greenville Reinvestment Zone Number Five. Greg?
Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Judge, and thank me too. Thank John. Thank everybody, commissioners, thank y'all. Before we get started here, just want to recognize we do have a representative of the company here today, Russ Sims, right back here. Russ, not related to me, as far as we know, not related, and Jessica, not related to you. And it's a Sims family reunion, but we're not related, so.
Greg, I wouldn't admit being candid to you.
That's right. Good idea, David. So anyway, glad Russ is here. He's the area director from corporate office in Atlanta. So...
Atlanta, Texas?
Atlanta, Georgia.
Oh, okay.
So I always love to do this. Y'all know this, that anybody from out of state, when we do a deal with him, we got him to say the pledge of Texas, so it has to come to Texas, right? Has to come to Hunt County. So anyway, y'all saw this presentation. John and I have been working with this company, which is an old Greenville company, been through some reiterations, but been here a long time. They have some of the original groundbreaking material that's in here as well that when they built this plant years ago. But they made a presentation. Do you remember Randy Beach came before you, I think it was in June or so? And that was when we were talking about, we had to create the reinvestment zone. So the state of Texas requires us to recreate the reinvestment zones. The city of Greenville is the lead authority on that jurisdiction on that. But y'all have to review that as well because we're asking you for a tax abatement as that as well. So tonight, we'll go up before the city of Greenville to ask for them, for their permission for a tax abatement as well on this expansion, on this great company. So I will, I will go forward. So Royal Oak, again, June 12th, they made this presentation, been around since 1953, Pine Mountain and Diamond. You might have had some of this product you've used in the past, Royal Oak charcoal. There's one of the Herald banner. Is this at full screen or? Okay. It's okay. I think we're zoomed in. Actual size, maybe? I don't know. There we go. That's better. So, so this was the future home of Pine Mountain Corp. What's that?
I was standing right in front of it.
Okay. So there's the Herald banner ad, I mean, article about the groundbreaking, which was cool way back when. 1985. Yeah, it says the top, 1985. Thanks, John. And then since 1953, they've been around making all kinds of product for our barbecues and backyard grillers, so on and so forth. Our corporate headquarters, so their corporate headquarters in Roswell, Georgia, with 12 manufacturing facilities employing over 600 people. They make the Pine Mountain logs here, so some of that, that team is here making Pine Mountain logs since 1980. I know we've probably purchased those if you have a fireplace at home. I have certainly, and great product. There's their locations, their charcoal facilities are in the red stars across Arkansas, Missouri, Tennessee, and then Pine Mountain Firelog Facilities are here, Alabama and Georgia. And so today, we're talking about the Alabama operation, trying to prevent Texas from going to Alabama. That's what we're trying to do. And then certainly, you can tell around, along the forestry products, that they're around heavily tree states, so for their, their business. And you see down at the bottom, Missouri railroad tie business as well. Here's some of the products Randy showed us last time, which, you know, great products here, the matches, the fire logs, the charcoal. Thanks to Russ, said he was a big part of this charcoal pellets phase that they just started, what, a couple of months ago, Russ?
Yep.
Yeah. So he was telling me about how much he experienced, experiences that at home and mixing it with the 100% charcoal with some wood and get that smoke and how that Royal Oak pellets is a really good product right now for them. I look forward to using it. Ladder fluid, everything for your backyard barbecue. So this is the current facility. Those two buildings there, the ones on the left are not part of that. The ones on the right is what we're talking about, the two buildings, the manufacturing, the warehouse and the expansion area that they're talking about. Hopefully, we can bring the, the current Alabama plant here. So the manufacturing building is about 108,000 square feet, warehouse about 180,000 square feet, total 28 acres. They have eight acres available for expansion, industrial park. So if you remember, this is over in the major industrial park around Greenville, just north of the old Rubbermaid Plant. This, this is just a survey of the property showing where they can expand to. And then this is their, their current, they have about 53 hourly employees there today. They, they want to grow that to a total of 107 hourly employees or 107, 117 in that range. They want to grow their, their investment there by, up to about $10 million in infrastructure, infrastructure building and equipment. It's a, it's a three-year project though for them to do it. And so as they add on new lines, build buildings and add lines, it's going to take them a little time to build up their facility here. Transition to a three-shift operation. So I think now today is one shift, is that right? One shift today. They want to grow it to three shifts with this new plant expansion. Those are the phases, modernization of the current building, plant controls, dust mix, upgrades, expansion, extrusions, build new R&amp;D facility at the facility, expansion of building administrative, increase volume plant by 57%, 3.1 million capital investment. So Phase One, July of next year, and they want to create 23 new jobs. Lot of things happening in the new, in the new, and in the old plant as well as the new plant. By October 27th, packaging, modernization, additional lines, additional shifts complete, additional upgrades of plant controls, blah, blah, blah. Another 19 jobs. Phase Three, upgrades to raw material in December 28th, and adding shift extrusions and increased volumes at the plant, add another 16 jobs. So these are next steps for them, you know, as they go through their, their analyzation and their decision to, to expand here in Greenville. The rail connection, they've got to figure that out. We've got the NeTex railroad, as Mark and I know, the board members there for Hunt County, we have some issues we're trying to work through, try to get them better rail service, but that's a big thing for them. And then, or they could continue, they could leverage the operation in Southern Missouri or the Birmingham, Alabama side that, we don't even want to talk about those two things. Okay. So they pride themselves on supporting the community. So, you know, they, that's something Randy talked about, and they thank y'all for your support and, and on this project. So I think that's all his presentation. So one, one last thing I'll say about the tax abatement is, you know, we, John and I, we've been working on it since February with these folks about trying to grow, grow their business here in Greenville. They will be, you know, currently on the tax rolls as stated in the tax abatements, they have land and improvements at 4.1647 million in land and improvement. Then machinery and equipment, they have 6.714840 million. They want to start their tax abatement on both of those and realize we can only abate, in state law in Texas, you can only abate new value to the tax rolls. So none of those values will be abated. Those are always going to be on the tax rolls. So anything they add, a couple million, three million here and there, wherever they add, that will be at a 50% rate. We're asking y'all for 10 years, which is the standard we've been, we've been working on with competitive with all the other projects we've been working on. But they do want to delay the start, which is legal. You can delay the start up to three years, and they want to start January 1, 2027, and then it will expire December 31st, 2036. So that's what they're asking of the county. They'll be asking the same thing of the city, that we can attract them to build in Greenville and not the other states. That's, that's our main goal here today. So thank you so much. I'm here to answer any questions. Russ can answer any questions if you like, so.
So is the, is the delay just the construction time?
I think in their ramp up, I don't know. Russ, do you want to talk about that on the timing on your term?
Come to the mic, please. We got to be on record.
Okay. Good morning. Yeah, it's really, this has to do with the timing of getting contractors set up, getting everything in place. So 2027 would probably be when you'll see the bulk of the work done. If you noticed in the, the timeline, we're talking July of 2026, just for first, of the first phase. So, but as contractors, we've already ran into stuff here in the past where it's just getting extended and pushed out.
So just out of curiosity, the, the growth in capacity, is that tied to market growth or consolidations of other facilities?
Both. So it would be the consolidation of two facilities into one. If you noticed, we, we only run one shift. If you noticed, we only run one shift. We have the capabilities to run two to three shifts. So, each plant is only running one shift. So, by consolidating, you know, that's a lot less overhead. Absolutely. And also, you know, we're revitalizing our R&amp;D work. We've been outside contracting or using our corporate office, we're resources in Missouri, and we're getting a dedicated R&amp;D group, and we'd like to bring here.
Thank you.
You're talking about adding, potentially adding 58 new employees?
That's correct.
Okay. And that's over maybe a three-year period?
Yeah. We tried to, we've estimated it out. It all depends on how the projects go, but.
Could be sooner or three years.
I'll be managing the projects, so, you know, we have a pretty detailed plan. We're just waiting for the go, so.
When y'all came here, did y'all build the buildings or were they backfilled buildings? They built them. Yeah. I couldn't remember.
And Greg, just to further clarify for the public's benefit, any abatement is only on the increased value?
Yes, correct, Mark. Yeah, anything new value to the tax roll, you have the legal authority to abate. But anything existing by state law, we cannot abate, so. It'll always be there, yeah.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank y'all.
All right. Thank you.
Entertained a motion for approval?
So moved.
Got a motion second? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank y'all.
Thanks, Greg.
All right. Action number seven, a resolution of the Hunt County Commissioners' Court, nominating a candidate or candidates to the Hunt County Appraisal District Board of Directors. Commissioners, under the new laws set up by Senate Bill 2, they've got, they're creating, they're now creating their staggered nominated positions. And so, this time, they have two, two of their members either have to be reelected or somebody replacing them. The two that are currently serving in those seats are Jim Bob Grove and Paul Painter, and they both are consenting to serve again. And they, I think they both are the, I know we voted for Jim Bob, and I think we voted Paul both in the past. Matter of fact, we nominated Paul when he first got on here several years ago. But we can nominate up to, was it? Each taxing unit may nominate up to two candidates, so. We can nominate these two or somebody suggest others. We can do that.
Well, I'm for sure good with Jim Bob Grove remaining on there.
Paul also. I mean, they both.
I'm good with Paul Painter. I don't know Jim Bob.
Yeah, they're both high-quality, knowledgeable business people.
Jim Bob Grove was head of facilities at L3 Harris, and Paul's president of Alliance Bank here in town. I entertain a motion for approval of those, Jim Bob Grove and Paul Painter.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
And Judge, just for the public's benefit, so they understand, this is kind of a, the timing of this is a little bit strange because of new laws being enacted, but from here on, everyone on the board is on a two-year recurring term.
Yes. Next year, there'll be the three-people term. And then, they'll alternate to two and to three, and then, there's still three elected?
Yeah, three elected.
Three elected by the public. All right. Action number seven, a resolution of the Hunt County Commissioners' Court nominating a candidate, that's the one we just did, excuse me. Number eight, request for permission to replace just the conductor spanning over the road. The existing poles will be reused and the alignment of equipment will remain the same as existing under County Road 2702 under normal stipulation precinct 2 by request by Encore.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to second? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Action number nine, the request for permission to replace two existing poles and replace the conductor that spans over the road. All equipment will remain in the same alignment as existing on County Road 2704 under normal stipulations in precinct 2 per Encore.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action number 10, upgrade of approximately 2,800 feet of County Road 1043 from dirt to rock in precinct 1 at county's expense.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion to second? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Action number 11, the replat of Lot 1 of Green Meadow Estates, Section B in Precinct 1. Brian?
Okay, this is replat dividing one lot into two. I did have the neighbor across the street call and voiced some concern about a potential increase in water running across her property. Think she's okay after I spoke with her. Let her look at it. I think she's comfortable with it now. So, other than that, it meets all the requirements that we have.
Commissioners, any questions? At this time, we'll open it up to the public for any public comments. Anybody wish to speak for or against this item, please come forward, state your name and address. Daniel, anything on the line? Being none, I'll close the public testimony. Entertained a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Action number 12, the final plaid of DFW and Adlin Edition in Precinct 2.
A pretty simple plaid, meets all the requirements.
Any questions? Entertained a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Action number 13, the final plaid of Savannah Edition, lots 1 through 3, Block A in Precinct 3.
Simple three-lot plaid meets all the requirements.
Entertained a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion to second? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Action number 14, the final plaid of Fuller FM 499 Edition in Precinct 4.
Simple one-lot plaid meets all the requirements.
Entertained a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion to second? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Brian. Daniel, we need anything in executive session? Okay. At this time, we'll go into executive session under 551.071. Items 1 and 2, executive session. Thank y'all.
We're live, Judge.
All right, we're back in regular session at 11:31. Is there anything else before the court today? Being nun, I entertain a motion for appro- for adjournment.
Approved adjournment.
Second?
All right, got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned. Approve adjournment.
Second.